Welcome to the special council meeting of Thursday, May the 5th, 2022. This will be dealing with the 2022 budget. We acknowledge that the town of Kirk Lake is located in the traditional territories of the Cree and Bogonkun peoples and other indigenous people whose presence continues to enrich our vibrant community today. We have recognized and offer our gratitude for their care and teaching about the earth and culture. We honor those teachings through our interactions today and every day thereafter. We thank them for sharing this land with us. We commit to ongoing learnings about how cultural identity is celebrated, represented and honored, as well as the inclusion of indigenous perspectives through action. Make a wish. Thank you. Meeting called to order and we'll have a moment of silence.
Approval of the agenda moved by Councilor Rick Owen, seconded by Councilor C.C. White. Be it resolved that the agenda for the special, special meeting of council held on May 5th, 2022, beginning at 4:40 p.m. Be approved as circulated and finally that sections 32 and 45 of the town of Kirkland leads procedural by law number 15075 as amended. Be suspended to permit debate and motions from the floor regarding the 2022 capital and operating budget.
All in favor? Motion carried. Any declaration of pecuniary interests? Unnoted. Petitions and delegations? Unnoted. Item number five, acceptance of minutes and recommendations. Item number six, reports of municipal office communications. I will ask the finance chair, councillor Ivan left to take over.
Okay, so item, item six one is the capital and operating budget deliberation day one Lloyd Crocker, treasurer.
How's that? Okay. Is it the side here? Because I expect that we're going to have two visitors from the different directors depending on what kind of questions. So I'm very pleased. I think tonight my goal and we, I'll take direction from you very willingly depending on how long it takes us to get through the capital. Kind of focus on that. And if you get through it quick, maybe we can turn our attention to the operating a little bit, but based on what I've seen in the past, getting to the capital. Just want to kind of put out there just a little reminder. You guys have been doing this for a while now. So you're really familiar with this, but there's really only three ways you can finance capital. Either through taxes, which everybody understands, but there's also fees that are kind of much like taxes. So that applies in the water and wastewater system where we raise separate fees, which are expected to cover capital projects in that particular area. Second area is reserves and reserve funds, monies and, and surpluses that have been put aside in the past for this purpose. And of course, the third one is debt itself. So again, I just wanted to kind of summarize that because a lot of the spreadsheet has multiple columns and we're breaking out a lot of information here, but essentially it falls in one of those three buckets. Okay, so I guess I'll take direction from you councillor Ivan, whether or not we want to go through this line by line. Let me start.
I think, you know what? I think if we take questions on anybody who has any concerns or questions about the capital budget, then I might be probably usually go in line by line because that's going to, we don't need to do that if there's no concerns and
Sure.
Simply okay with that? Yes.
Last my three questions right away. So lighting and side parking lot, is this that one pole in the middle of parking lot that's happened like four years or we lighted something else up for $80,000?
It's, it's more than one pole. There's, I guess, the health and safety. Health and safety people took, took a look over at the complex. There's one very big chunk of a parking lot that's not lit well at all. So the back one going to the ball, the, so this is just the front.
Perfect. Second one, how do you get to $49,818? For demolition, like why $818? That's just random.
Yeah, I think that really is just kind of a reflection of, of an average that was used to kind of come up with the draft budget numbers. You know, it's up to directors if they want to round or, you know, but I believe that's sort of an average.
My last one's about the, the aerial truck. So I'm all for finding a truck we need if it's been on time coming. But the number one pump is 25, 20. Probably older than certain people in this audience right now. So are we just going to start putting money aside for a new pump? Because I've seen number three come out a lot more than number one in the past few weeks. So there's rumblings about number one not being so efficient. Are we starting to forecast when this one does die on us?
Yep. So it's not built into this budget right here. Certainly if council wants to entertain the idea, you know, there's, there's coming a process where and you just, you guys went through it last fall. If you remember when you approved, there was a surplus last year and you approved where that surplus went to supply it up for capital and a few others there. So you could, you can obviously use that process to do it. You can do the budget process or you can actually, you know, early council, we can move here. Do something like that. It's not built into this. Four months into the job, I'm not really sure what everybody's requirements are that way. But yeah, no. It didn't make it on this list. This list was submitted by the directors. So assuming there's a reason for that.
Okay, my first question will be the item under practice of two new back holes. For 110,000 to $389. So the tax levy, whether that is worth 539. It's a thing to me. Are we buying one or are we buying two?
So, so the request is for two. The last year you guys set aside 112,500, I believe, in reserves for the future purchase of a back hole. So, so between that and there's a small drawdown from one of the equipment reserves to act to make that 155. And then the balance would be paid through tax.
The second one is the, the Ashford Young Avenue extension of schools.
Yep.
For 178,000. My question is that how old are the pipes? How old are the water? And still, I mean, we go and just Ashford this surface and then turn around, they run and say, well, we have to dig out the pipe, play the pipe. So shouldn't we maybe, I, I don't know, how old are the infrastructure underneath that road before we Ashford it? Because maybe cheaper, I don't know. So why, so why are you digging anywhere? Pipes and then pay. Well, if they're relatively new, the pipes are new, I have to buy the surface with Ashford. I have no.
Yeah, I can't answer that part of the question. This, this was to finish that. And this was, it's been left, it's gravel for sorry.
That's, that's fine. Okay. That's what I, that's, that was me.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, that's it. Thank you.
Lloyd, I have a question. The, the other 1.2 million for the fire truck, the aerial, the aerial truck. That money is in other, but I'm just not sure where that money's coming from.
I only put it in other because we're anticipating it being financed using a loan to pay for it.
Okay.
So mechanism for that, it wouldn't technically hit this year's budget other than the loan payments, you know, once, but we haven't found the truck yet.
Okay.
So that's why you don't see it in a tax levy, but the loan payments themselves, they'll be in the fire department's operating budget going forward. There's, I believe it's three or four payments in it this year. We're assuming that we're going to find it by the fall. Whether that happens or not, I'm not sure, but the actual loan payments come out of the fire department's operating budget.
Perfect. Thank you.
This is here because you passed the motion. I just wanted to.
Yes, I know. After today, we probably need a fire truck.
Lot of activity.
Lot of activity. Other questions? Councillor Owen? Nothing?
Sorry to disappoint you.
I'm not disappointed. You can turn the mic off.
I, I've thought over this three or four times and some of the concerns that I had have been raised by other councillors and I find it a little confusing because a lot of what, what's in this budget is already being approved and proposed. So
We have talked about much of this stuff for the last four years at times.
It's a little difficult from that point too, but no, I'll
Thank you.
Thank you.
This sounds so easy. Yes.
I'd just like to comment. You had a separate page or two on the capital budget explaining the factors why each item needed to be replaced or kind of shop like that made it so much easier for us. So all this stuff, there was nothing. There's no, nobody dreaming pipe trades.
Thank you. Councillor Owen?
You shouldn't have woke me up. I did have one question. Kinross paving. Now, we had a, I think it was a presentation for my goal and they were going to at that time expand Kinross Park and, and so my question is, does it really make sense to spend money on paving there right now when we don't know what the end end situation is going to be and what it's going to look like?
My, my understanding was if they were going to expand, but not in the current, in the current area, they were going to expand on the other side of that. From what, from what I understood, I'm not sure if everybody understood the same thing when they did the presentation.
But we haven't seen any formal plans.
No, I think we should see, you're right.
And I'm just concerned about spending money there and then and whether it's our money or Kirkland Gold's money, it's still wasted money if we have to redo it.
Absolutely.
That, that's just.
I think, sorry if I can just interject. Sure. A whole like rules, but that, that paving, I think was what's been identified as a safety risk. There's some chunks of the paving that's not safe anymore. And, and that money is to kind of bring it back to.
I see Bonnie shaking her head. So he must be right.
Anything like that, fixing what's there.
Yeah, I was just going to add.
Thank you. Councillor Owen, thank you. So do we need a motion to accept this? It sounds like we're all in agreement. There's no outstanding issues?
Turn you, Mr. Chair, to all of council. If it's the will of council to proceed with the operating budget. It was our intent to go through the capital budget this evening. I, I would have to ask for a recess at the end of the meeting. If, if council was ready to prepare to approve, I'll have to confer with the treasurer on the wording for the recommendation. So if it's the will of council to proceed with the operating, then we may do so in a.
Two separate motions, correct?
I believe there's, it's going to be a three-part test. It, it is, it will have to include the, the tax rate, the waste and water and wastewater rates as well as the operating.
Okay.
And you're free to discuss in an open dialogue. That's why the rules were suspended.
Lloyd, you did an amazing job.
The, sorry, if you want to go into the operating budget, I'm open to the idea. It's, it's relatively early and maybe you could give me five minutes to kind of sort my papers into the other pile. I wasn't expecting us to fly through the capital quick so, so quickly. But if you wish to, I'm very open to the idea.
That why did? Okay. Councillor Owen?
I just, just for my own clarification. Could someone lay out the exact steps that we want to, like, if we approve this, then we move on to the operating budget, approve that. When do we set the tax rates? And all like, can someone just lay it out clearly for me?
Sure.
Yeah. So, so the process we're going through now is for you guys to have your, your time to give us feedback and, and tell us what things right, what's wrong. Once we, you know, we're talking about approval of the capitals, I guess that's not the formal approval that you see in, in the minutes and everything like that, right? It's just giving us to say that, yes, we're happy with this number. Then we'll go back and start incorporating that. And the same thing with the operating, your process, if you make changes, then, then I'll bring it back to you. But there will be a, you know, call it a memo. I'm not sure what the proper terminology is, but the clerk just kind of identified the major areas. So, you know, it'll come to council in the form of a memo. They'll have the tax rates in it. It'll have the dollars being spent, capital operating. It'll have the water and the wastewater rates in it and that'll come in front of the council for approval. And that's kind of the final step. But what we're doing here tonight is just trying to get to a point saying, here's how many dollars we're going to spend. Then I'll take that back and the other people come up with the tax rates and then you'll have one more kick.
Thank you.
Through you, the chair to all of council. So just to, if you'd like, I can read the draft recommendation. So it gives you an idea of what making recommendation on this thing. It is, it says that be resolved at memorandum number 2022 in 006 entitled 2022 operating capital budget received. And that the treasurer make the requested amendments to the 2022 operating and capital budget as directed by council. And finally, that the 2022 operating and capital budget as amended be presented for final approval at a regular meeting of council. So that is in essence from this evening to the next meeting in which the treasurer will be preparing another memo to council, identifying all of the information at the council.
Thank you.
So if it's the will of council to take a recess for 10 minutes to.
It's will of council to take a recess for 10 minutes. We're ready to continue with the operating portion, operating budget portion of this meeting since we went through the capital portion so quickly. And we'll, we'll probably use the same, same way. If you have any questions on the operating, simply raise your hand and we'll have Mr. Crocker attend to your concerns. Thank you.
So again, if you don't mind, I'll just take a minute to kind of make a bit of a statement. So one thing I do want to make kind of clear. So Josh and myself, we put this in a format that we thought was a little bit easier to kind of understand. And we tried to be very consistent between lines, between years. But I think a couple of the answers you're going to get tonight are going to be, well, last year it was classified as materials. This year it's contract services. We're just, so we've tried to kind of clean up the characterizations of a few of these lines. But I just want to be clear that, you know, we, when we put this together, we didn't have the exact groups that they had last year. So what you're seeing there is what was presented to you last year, but it doesn't match up exactly with, with the way we grouped things this year. So there may be a couple of answers like that. I think that's, and, and again, I'll just send this on. If I can answer it, I'll be happy to answer it, but seeing you looking over my shoulder. I mean, I'm looking for a director to either speak up or, or show up. So and is this loud enough or are you okay?
Councillor White, can you hear? Yes. Nodding your head. Yes.
Okay. Ready to go.
Councillor Owen's?
Too little. And you might've just answered the question in, in saying that. So if I'm looking at public works and then there's one in Water Works where Public Works contracted services, one from 217,000 to 448, or something like that. Huge amount of increase there. Would that be one of those scenarios?
Yeah, it's a, it's a combination of that.
Okay.
And it's also, I think I mentioned it in the last meeting, there's more money being put aside for these, for the engineering studies.
Okay.
To set up for future years to get some capital projects ready in the pipeline. So between that kind of reclassification and the extra 80,000, that's the difference in those two lines. That was also one of the submitted questions that I got. I got, and there was, if you don't mind, I'll take a minute to answer the other submitted question. It was a question about the KAL solar project partnership that we have with basically CapEx pacing and, you know, we all drive by it on our turn. The question was whether or not there was anything in this budget, especially related to revenue. And there isn't. And if you, I don't know if you, kind of what you've seen for their financial statements in the last couple of years, but they've been running losses. And it's our understanding they're going to run a loss again this year. So, you know, I'm not putting something into budget that's basically wishful thinking. If, you know, if, if they, we're waiting for a draft right now. If the draft comes back with something different than what I understand, then, then we can revisit the, you know, whether or not there's something there, but yeah.
Councillor Shaba?
Yeah, I, I wanted to forward the question to you. And we don't have any revenue. It says it's, it's a deficit, right?
Yeah, it's, it's a net loss. There is, there's revenue in there, but expenses are higher.
So where is, where is, where is it reflected? Where is it in this? Well, I don't have.
Yeah. So under, yeah. So this budget is prepared under basically what we call PSAP, public sector accounting.
Yeah.
Standards and, and what the KAL solar project, it's called a government business enterprise under those standards.
But that's enterprise. I was too sure that was one. Okay. So at least some of us are, some of us wanted to know a year or two from now, the status of this, then we can look at that line item. So this is it. It has changed. It hasn't changed, whatnot. So was my question to see how they.
Yeah. So the line item right now would be zero because the standard, we pick up our portion of the profit.
Yes.
That's what would normally be in here if it was applicable. It's not applicable right now. So that's why there's nothing, I mean, we could put a, we could put a nil line in there somewhere. If, if you just want to be able to track from year to year. But right now it's nil because there, there, it's a loss. There's nothing to take on.
Yeah, personally, I mean, so could the rest of the councillors, but I think we're very helpful to have that. So that people that will be here in future, they will see it. They will see it and make a decision one way or the other. I when, when the gentleman that, that was in charge came here and my understanding also is that there's an element of property taxes being paid. And I'm not too sure how you reflect that on an account. How you reflect that in the scheme of things when it comes to revenue stream. So would that be a correct statement?
Yeah. So if I, if I remember right, it's last year it was about $15,000 of property taxes that we collected. And they actually pay us. It is a real transaction. It becomes an expense on their, their financial statements. I don't know, you know, there, for accounting purposes, there's no reason to do anything other than what's happening that way. Until they start making profit, then I guess you can sit down and have some kind of discussion with your, with the partner in this, in this, this project.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for that, but I still have, back to the chair. I would just personally like to see somewhere down, somewhere that this is reflected on future councillors that are coming in and it's, okay, there it is. And they can either look at it do whatever they want to do with it or discard the information. At least the information we prepare from the digital receipt. That's just fine.
Yeah, I believe this council has asked for presentations from the people in CapEx pacing, come in with some financial statements. I know we have had a couple of presentations at different times and I know that that's, that has been a concern for some time. So I, I echo your concerns and it would be nice to have some revenue from something that we thought we were going to get hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. And haven't seen a penny come in yet. So, yeah. Mayor Kylie?
Boy. From an accounting standard, it's operating as a loss. Mainly capital cost, a lot of sort of appreciation. So cash flows down. Not making just budget. Make back here. It's not the whole financial.
Yeah. So I guess I'll frame this in a way that you know, you're, you're most of, you're most of the way there in coming at it from an accountant's point of view. You really are. But I think what, to be honest with you, I think this discussion we should probably have at a different council meeting because it doesn't really hit the budget particularly well, other than it's zero for budget purposes, right?
I think you're right. It's probably not the right.
We could kind of revisit how that affects us within our numbers. I'd be very happy to have that discussion.
Yeah, because actually, actually I'll be able to put seven or eight hundred dollars.
Yeah. But let's move on from that. If we're not, it's not, it's not part of this and we should, you're probably right. Okay. Councillor White?
Sorry, I just didn't hear a word that Mayor Kylie said, but conversation is moving on. I get the gist of that. So we can just move on.
Thank you. Councillor Owen?
Yeah, a number of things stood out to me and, and basically when I'm looking at these numbers, I look for big changes. And it seems to me in expenses under a number of different places, materials and supplies. Building and property standards. Two, 21 actual, 5,559 up to 30,048. Airport materials and supplies, 221 actual, 39,434. 22 budget, 62,170. That may be them all. I, I went through this earlier today. No, here's another one. Treasury. 11,926 actual in 221, 22 budget, 14,500. Management information systems. Actual 221, 2021, 15,300. fifteen thousand three hundred and seventy-two dollars, uh, seventy-three thousand dollars. Now, I don't know, it seems pretty consistent through this budget that materials and supplies have gone up incredibly high. And I would, I'm wondering if there's any sort of explanation for this other than seven percent inflation.
Yeah, so I can answer a couple of them directly and I can kind of give you the umbrella statement as well. The two, the twenty-twenty-one actuals, um, the reality is that there was a lot of money that was in the budget and wasn't spent, um, because of COVID. They weren't able to, you know, source what they needed. They weren't able to get out there and do some of the things that they normally do. So I think, you know, it, it wouldn't be all that far off of accurate by saying the, the budget here is closer to what they think the real actual is going to be operating under normal kind of conditions where you're not always getting phone calls every morning saying somebody has to spend the next five days at home. So you can't, you know, you can't go finish the sideways sidewalk project because it's just not happening. So there, there's a very strong element of that in those actuals that you're looking at. Um, there's a couple you mentioned that I can talk to directly. Okay, so treasury, the, the, the change there is, is, we actually, we bought some chairs. There's, there was quite, quite a few that never a little bit beat up and, uh, sold, I think it's about three thousand dollars difference you were looking at.
Yeah, that was relatively small.
Yeah, so we bought some chairs. Um, it's just a reflection. It was, it was time to do it. Uh, the M I S, I think, um, speaking to it directly, there, there's quite a few things that, that had to kind of be cleaned up, uh, you know, the projects that weren't finished. And they're not really capital in nature. It's licensing and stuff like that, that, you know, you have to kind of get in place and get it's a little bit of this is an extension of the projects you'd already started. And a lot of it is just kind of moving forward in the world and in the computer world. And so there's quite a bit of money in there kind of reflect the fact that we're, we're getting, we're crossing our Ts and dotting our Is with the softwares that we use and, and improving some stuff as well.
Well, thanks very much. I, I knew there'd be a logical explanation.
Uh, Counselor White.
Um, yes, just a general question. What types of items are included under the administration and other? In some departments, it, it accounts for hundreds of thousands of dollars. So what types of items are under that umbrella?
So, most of the time it's exactly what you think it is. It's things like, uh, I was trying to think of a good example on the small side. I don't, I can't think of one off the top of my head, sorry. Um, if you're seeing a big number, some of that is things like, so if we're having, we're spending extra money, uh, a transfer, for example. If we know there's a the example I have is escaping me, sorry. Well, sorry, let, let me swing to like water and wastewater. I can take one right off the top of my head. And then another charges reflect some of the charges that happen from the Treasury Department in our work that we do for the water and the water and the wastewater system. So it would show up as then another, you know. And, and that's also for some lines is going to look a little bit big. A lot of departments, it's, it's not a very big number at all. Um, occasionally we have special things going on, um, like, like your election, which would, you know, maybe fall under that category versus a normal, you know, some of the other categories. Um, if you had a specific department, I might do a better job, sound a little bit more like I know what I'm talking about.
That's okay. Um, so for parks and recreation, it's a hundred and ninety-eight thousand and change. Treasury is a hundred and forty-five and change. Administration is a hundred and fourteen and change. So those are just the first couple of pages. And yet other departments, like you said, it's only, you know, five grand.
Yeah, so, so treasury and, and M I S, for example, which I know a little bit better than a couple of the other budgets. Uh, we carry some of the costs, you know, like telephone and stuff like that, basically for the, for the whole corporation. So they look a little bit bigger in our departments, um, than they would in the other departments. Um, parks and recreation, I, I just don't know off the top of my head. I'm not sure. Apologize. Some, some of these I know well and some I don't.
That's okay.
Mister Chair, for you, to, um, all of council, for administration, I believe that, um, in our department, we take care of our E A P program. So our employee assistance program for the entire corporation. So that could, uh, also be a factor in the large number there.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you.
At the back, insurance, it's health insurance. Thank you. Benefits?
Yes, yeah, for our department, insurance is probably the biggest one there because we've got insurance on each aspect. So sometimes you'll see the, like, well, you'll have the combined insurance for ball, for state park, for pool, for arena, for park. So that's a very big number for perks for that.
Yeah. That makes, that does make sense. Thank you.
Never goes down.
Yeah, no, that's true.
Yeah, well, Bonnie's still here, and I hope my eyes are not deceiving me. Uh, in parks and, and recs, rec under revenue, user fees is listed at four nine nine, two hundred and seventy-five, up from an actual two sixty-five, eight fifty-one. Uh, in two twenty-one, tell me that that's a realistic number and that we're, if we're not going to get exactly there, we're going to get very close to it.
I really believe we should. So we really looked at our twenty nineteen revenues to come up with this number because that was the first, that was the last year before two years with lots of closures. We had almost six months of closures in twenty twenty. So we were just shy of six months when we actually added two times, three times up. So we really believe we're going to be able to hit that.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
I'm smiling underneath this.
I have one question and it's regarding the museum. I know there's no appetite for us to rid ourselves of that museum at this council, but I, I, I know we've talked about changing the format of the museum often at this, at this council chambers. We've talked about making some adjustments to their operating hours, uh, restructuring it, doing something different because when you have five or six or ten thousand dollars in total user fees that actually command people that are paying to come into the museum and we spend three hundred and fifty thousand, in my mind, it's, it's not a financial, financially sound decision, but it, it is what it is. And if, uh, but, but I notice in here that they've actually increased the budget for your museum and that, that scares me that if you put it in the budget, then all of a sudden it becomes the budget and people will continue on the way it has been for the next number of years, doing the same thing over and over and over again. And it never does get fixed. So.
So the biggest increase, sorry, the, the biggest increase that I know of is they, they're getting some funding for a kind of a reopening, some special funding. Uh, I believe it's approximately thirty thousand dollars. So, you know, about thirty thousand on top and bottom, both revenue and expenditures are spoken to because they found some funding to run this special kind of reopening program.
But still costs the city a quarter million dollars to operate in spite of all that.
Yeah, the rest of your.
You know, and where they're coming from, I, and I look at, I mean, I understand this grant money comes in from the province and the feds, but that's just another taxpayer funded, right? So it's not really an operational thing where people actually generate income by doing something that benefits our community. It's just something that they apply for and somehow they get it. And that, that just concerns me that it, it works that way. And like I said, I know there's no appetite to, to end this, but at the same time, I just think there should be some adjustments made to either, what, I mean, what, whatever we've been talking to at this council chamber for, I don't know, three years anyway.
Uh, Mr. Chair, um, uh, staff, will we bring a report, uh, to council this year regarding future operations of miss, of the museum? With some, uh, for, for some, um, uh, options for council to consider. So that was, uh, direction council, well, I can remember the council meeting date, but it's a few council meetings ago. And, uh, so will we bring a report forward like this year regardless of options to consider?
Thank you. Counselor Owens.
Yes, funny you should mention museum. I ran into a couple of, uh, museum volunteers last night. Very nice ladies that have, uh, been very active in our community for many, many years. And, um, they voiced their concern that we would close the museum. And I told them that we were still awaiting, uh, the report from the Ontario, uh, Heritage Trust Fund, I believe is what it's called, as per, um, the repairs needed on the building. And until we get that report, it's very difficult for us to make any decisions because the cost of, of, of repairing the building, because it's a heritage building in the way that it would be required or prohibited, someone couldn't afford it. Um, I am encouraged that the museum is showing more aggressiveness and is promoting itself in the community. Um, I've noticed it in the Northern News, they're running those pictures every week. Um, I think they've got the message that they have to, they have to change. Um, my concern with the museum is the line on labor and related of two hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars. To me, that's a lot of money, um, for a building that is empty most of the time. Um, and I think that may be an area that we're going to have to, uh, make some hard decisions. Or it may not be this council, maybe the next council, they have to make some hard decisions, um, concerning, uh, that figure, um, because there's so many things that's, that we cannot uh, change. We cannot change. There has to be temperature control. There has to be humidity control. Um, there's very specific things to go with operating museum and we can't touch those rooms. So we have few options. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor White.
Sorry, I just, I feel the need to remind council that we did pass a motion to have six out of the eight recommendations from the strategic plan, uh, reviewed. And that has been ongoing with Bonnie and the staff from the museum as well as the museum advisory committee. Our last, um, motion that we passed in regards to the museum was to present the, um, directive of going seasonal to the museum advisory committee before it comes back to council. So we are, as a council, actively working on making this department more financially feasible. Um, it's just very slow going right now. So I look forward to those six re- recommendations coming back as well as that report that's being currently worked on.
Thank you, Counselor White. Are there any other concerns regarding the operating budget? Sounds like we're, oh, go ahead.
I think you answered my question on that it's empty, uh, basically.
Is your mic on?
It's because of contract, contracted services that, uh, has brought that area up.
Yeah, that's like I said, the, the biggest part was the eighty thousand approximately in the budget to do those engineering studies. That's the biggest part of the change, you know.
Okay, we're happy with that. Sounds to me like we're moving on to wastewater.
Oh, no, I've got one more question.
Counselor White.
Um, just a refresher, what is residential development?
I don't remember, I don't know the, I know the numbers, I'm not sure.
Um, it was, I don't even know what page. It was on developmental services under economic development, planning and zoning, and then residential de- development.
Yeah, well, well.
Almost there.
Counselor White, uh, Wilf is coming up to answer your question.
Perfect.
Just give me a second to tune into the front. I don't believe it's economic development inside the development services and under the planning and zoning, um. And if I understand it correctly, that is essentially where we're putting in the revenues for land sales, et cetera, truck as a holding and then treasury will, uh, re, re, uh, redistribute them accordingly. So that's why you don't see very much in there like, uh, labor or related services and all that. Uh, the two hundred thousand dollars, that's usually put in as something that you know you're already getting or an estimation based on the past.
Thank you. She's shaking her head, yes.
Okay. Uh, just quickly, Counselor Owens, one, uh, you had also asked about building. Um, part of the material supplies was the purchase of cloud permit, uh, software that council had approved previously.
And just, I, I could add just one part to that. When you have land sales, depending on your, your past behavior has been that if you have a land sale, if the net amount ends up in a reserve for future development around your, your land, you know, development projects and stuff like that. Um, that comes before council at a later meeting. But just so you know that, that, you know, that's what you usually do with the, those monies.
Thank you, White. Sure.
It's a recommendation that should be done. Through the chair to the treasurer, we're going on to water.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll go on to, uh, water and wastewater budget. Same format. Anybody have any questions? Simply raise your hand and we'll. Counselor Owens.
How much water going up?
Uh, I, I, I. It's, it's the same two percent. It's based on last year's actual zone, not the budget.
Okay.
Um, and that's just to try to take into account the, the water changes that we already know are in the system. Depending on, you know, it's usually identifying the big users, whether or not they're changing. Um, so we take last year's actual, two percent has been added. Yep.
Counselor Owens.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Uh, underwater expenses, administration and other has gone from, uh, one forty-four, five eight four to four hundred and twenty-three, four fifty-nine. And, um, under wastewater, materials and supplies have gone from three thousand one hundred and ninety-two to seventy-three thousand nine hundred dollars. Is, uh, an explanation for those big jumps?
Um, top of my head, I can't identify either one of them. Uh, if you give me a minute of, of, of the numbers that we have with us, but, uh, the detail.
Underwater, um, there was a two hundred and twenty thousand dollars was, that was taken out of, uh, chemicals. So the Aqua contract had renewed. The chemicals came out. So you'll see contracted services went down a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the, uh, the chemicals removed or to, and other, for doing it, so.
And I'm, I'm sure there's good explanation for the others. I was just hoping we'd get it at a public meet, but.
I apologize.
No, no problem.
Mr. Shaba.
Yeah, um, under, um, underwater, uh, what will be the other revenue? As the, uh, we have it for ten thousand dollars, total in two thousand point one and this, uh, budgeting for twenty-three thousand four eighty-nine.
Yeah, there we do, um, have other charges, uh, when when we do say water, we, uh, not, sorry, not water, the water service line. If if frozen water or private side, uh, then they charge the resident for board on. The water service, we also keep, um, either rentals or businesses. So there there are a number of these smaller revenues that.
And I see your budget is the actual, so you've actually what you're using for that number. Although you budgeted last year for ten thousand, your actual was twenty-three thousand and you're and now you've budgeted or for you for twenty twenty-two is the same numbers you you actually spent or actually got last year, so. Yeah.
The, uh, while you're still there, Jim, it's transfers, whatever it is, uh, that's under, uh, expenses.
So I'll answer that one. So typically what happens in the past, but and it's it's true of wastewater as well. You'll see there's a line on on the bottom of wastewater as well. As you, if you incur a surplus in any particular year in those departments, they're a little bit different than your operating department, right? They they they're supposed to stand on their own. So what's been the the behavior of council in the past is when you have a surplus, you transfer it into a reserve, a specific reserve for water and wastewater, depending on what's creating the reserve. And that line, um, you know, that's why you see budgeted as zero of that last year's budget total. And this year, the surplus and the deficit, assuming you do the same motion you've done in the past come the fall, you will be transferring any surplus that you incur into reserves for future capital purposes, is the way it's been characterized. So I didn't assume that you're going to pass the motion, you know, three or four months from now, but that's that's why you see those lines are in the actuals and the private and the previous budgets. Uh, but it's not there yet in this budget. I just I'm not assuming council behavior when we get to the, until we get to the end of the year. But that's typically what happens when you see a surplus in water and wastewater.
Thank you. No other questions?
What do we need to do now, Ken?
So council could, um, if if it's the will of council, I can read the recommendation and, uh, the recommendation will be before, and if that's the will of council, then we would adjourn this evening and then the treasurer will be preparing supplementary memorandum to council, identifying the things that had mentioned previously in the meeting and then the recommendation. So I can go ahead and read the recommendation. Uh, moved by Counselor La Chaba, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens, be it resolved that memorandum number twenty twenty-two pin zero zero six entitled twenty twenty-two operating and capital budget be received and that the treasurer make the request amendments to the twenty twenty-two operating capital budget as directed by council. And finally, that the twenty twenty-two operating and capital budget as amended be presented for final approval at a regular meeting of council.
All in favor? Do you need that or set? All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you.
Thank you, Eugene. On item seven to, uh, fourteen. Not applicable for this, uh, meeting. Uh. Confirmation by law.
The confirmation by law will be presented at the next meeting.
Yep. Juror.
Moved by Counselor Pad. Oh, sorry.
Counselor White.
Sorry, if, um, I did have an item for number eleven. I just wanted to recognize that today, May fifth, is the National Day of Awareness for Murdered and Missing Indigenous Women and Girls. So by wearing red today, we, uh, show support for the victims and their families um impacted by this crisis. So thank you for that, gentlemen.
Thank you, Counselor White. Other items? Yep.
I just transpired tonight. Um. Schedule, uh, two meetings. Uh, what would be the status? Are we still going to be one or both?
Through New Year worship to all of council, the May, the special May twelfth meeting, the twelfth meeting of council will be canceled. The memorandum will be presented to council at the regular meeting of council on the seventeenth and the May twenty-sixth special council meeting will also be canceled.
So we want to approve the budget on May.
Seventeen. Thank you for the question. Do you like me to read you again? Okay, moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Stacy, Stacy White, be resolved that the special meeting of council due now adjourned at five forty-five P M.
All in favor? Motion carried. Meeting adjourned.